You did.
Okay. I always wanted to.
You can be the timekeeper if you want.
This is the May 8th meeting of the Village of Milbrook Board and Trustees. Please stand for the pleasure of the eight. And stand, remain standing for a moment.
I think the flag's over there.
Where'd it go? Thank you, Matt. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. We'll do their real call.
We're doing real call now?
No, let's do it now.
Okay. Mary Coffey?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Doral?
Here.
Justice Hertzler?
Here.
Justice Cantino? Justice Murphy?
Here.
Alright, thank you. So last month, we lost Andy Doral. He courageously served his country during the Vietnam War. Resigned in the rank of First Lieutenant of the US Army. He was seriously wounded while acting duty. Received many citations for his service before leaving on a 100% disability. Back in the States, he founded a healthcare staffing company. He was chair of the Village of Milbrook ZVA for many years. He had many hobbies and I became good friends on the rec about courts at Colton's Gym. But I always enjoyed his company. Peter, would you like to say a few words?
Uh, I appreciate the silence.
Nice. Now, can we have a moment of silence for Andy Doral? Thank you. Now, also last month, we lost Stan Morris, who was a longtime Milbrook resident. He was also a vet of the Vietnam War, served in the US Navy. He spent 30 years in the US Navy Intelligence Reserve. He co-owned a Milbrook travel business with his wife. He was a past trustee and deputy mayor on the village board. He served as chair of the planning board for many years. Stan and I disagree on many political issues. We always discuss them and never argue. Would you like a moment of silence now for Stan Morris for us? Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, next on the agenda is I want to introduce Chief Keith Borkin. He's currently working chief of the town of Fishkill Police Department. And starting six one, he's going to come become the chief of police for the Milbrook Police Department. And, um, well Keith, I think you've already introduced yourself to everybody here. So I'd like to start off with doing a swearing in by the partridge. Sarah? So Keith, you can stand and... I guess, can you come over? Why don't you come over here, Keith? I'm just on camera. I had surgery on my foot today, so I'm kind of dithering around, so.
Make sure you're in.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. Please raise your right hand if you have your name. Hi, please say your name.
Hi, Keith Borkin.
Do some, I swear.
Do some, I swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Chief of the Village of Milbrook Police Department.
Chief of the Village of Milbrook Police Department.
According to the best.
According to the best of my ability.
You're in.
Okay.
Thank you.
So our hope is that Chief Borkin comes in and with a clean piece of paper, decides how he wants to organize the Milbrook Police Department, all for the veteran. Looking, of course, with Sergeant Rip. And, um, we're expecting a big thing, so welcome aboard, Keith, and, uh, actually, Dan, you started.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Keith.
Okay. Alright, a couple announcements. First off, everyone should know that the Milbrook Day of Honor will begin the 27th of May. 27th of May, right? It's not on the agenda, but, um, the DFW has already gone through approval, so that's all set to go. Alright? And, uh, community day has been set. It's going to be September 21st this year. Administrative business. So the minutes, Sarah, came out too late for me to see them.
That's alright.
I'd like to try to get those out earlier if you can, at least at day or so.
I had a family thing last week.
Yeah, I understand, plus this is all the, uh...
And there was like...
Budget needs, yeah.
Yeah.
So if the board doesn't mind, I'd like to just delay the review of the briefs for the following meeting. Okay, we'll find out. Okay. Are you aware of paid vouchers that we are circulating for people by the board? A total of $14,000, $421. This includes the $50,000 for the retrofit of the, uh, new dump truck that arrived. And now it's probably running. Any questions about the vouchers? If you look at the operating expense report here today, we're running still to the black. The outlook is going to be very tight. Primarily because the, um, sidewalk project exceeded the budget. And our vote to reimburse the final $20,000 from the county is going to be tight. It's probably not going to happen by the end of this fiscal year. And sometimes Karen and Sarah can journal things to make it even. But right now, I think we're really nipping tough to close on the budget. I think that's primarily the reason why.
Yeah.
Right? The other thing the operating expense report shows is that the, uh, funds received for the April building for water and sewer haven't hit the books yet.
Correct.
So you'll see there's a significant shortfall, and I expect that to be reconciled once we get the revenue projections for the bills of assault made. Any questions about the vouchers? Are you going to motion for accepted vouchers?
I'll make that motion.
In a second? Polls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the vouchers approved. Thank you. Our own administrative business, Sarah, we're already with getting an improved audio video system toward the meetings.
Well, I sent Matt the specs to see if this is a, if there's a place that we can put the equipment. So I was just waiting.
Okay. So Matt, if you can help us out here, we should appreciate the ideas that we want to improve the quality, the size, of the, uh, both video as well as the audio. Like the equipment, I guess we're trying to look to see if it's stored somewhere.
Well, I have to look into my spam. I have a lot of times when she sends me emails, it goes to my spam, so.
Okay, fine.
I'll, I'll print it and leave it in your mailbox.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like some feedback from you in terms of how we can make this work. Because, you know, we're losing eyesight to the meetings charts. Appreciate your help there. Okay, with that, let's move on to the regular agenda. I don't see, uh, Peirre, true? So what's our update from the county? Let's go straight to the fire department. Tom?
Alright, uh, we have 15 fire alarms, 34 EMS calls, no car accidents. Uh, the structured fire call looks high, and all four of them are going mutually to other departments. Two of Pleasant Valley, one to... La Grange. One to Uniondale. Brush fires one, tree and wires four. Most of that was during that last heavy windstorm we had. And four department block side lines. NDP had 34 calls that some form of NDP unit went to. Our ambulance got out four times, transported once to the hospital. Uh, and 25 times, the fire department members obviously needed help setting up. Mutually given, like I said, four for the fire, EMS twice, both were to Dover during their second call in districts. And mutually received zero for fire, and four times for EMS, and all four times were, uh, second call for districts.
Okay.
So. Any questions on the calls? Alright, um, Justice, I know did the NDP contract end up getting extended for the one more year?
Yeah, so it's extended one more year. I was going to ask, I was going to talk to you about that. I'm going to go to the town board tomorrow and say to them that that is effective through May 31st to 3/25. But I want to get the board, the town, and the village engaged this year on what the next contract is going to be. Because I want the town to pay their full fair chair in the contract with this deal. So, um, yes, we got approval to continue it, but it's only for one more year. We need to renegotiate.
Alright.
Alright.
As I mentioned to you before, the chief car has finally been finished, everything is updated, everything turned out great. I have the outside, anyone would like to see it afterwards. Tomorrow night, we have a meeting with the potential builder for the new rescue truck to iron out some details. For that's the, uh, firm a price from him.
Alright.
The last thing I have, um, the app that we use for, uh, the spotted dog, that has been bought out by another company. So I'm waiting to see, uh, who the county kind of goes with. So there's an organization.
Good idea.
Of using thing.
Alright.
So far, a lot of companies are already saying, oh, we're just going to go with whoever bought out and we'll try to go from there, so.
It's worth a check.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
It's a pretty similar app, similar ideas behind it. We'll just see who the county ends up signing by, but it'll make it easier.
Okay, good.
That's all I've got.
Now, you're scheduled to put the old, uh, truck up for auction starting June 1st?
June 1st, yeah.
Okay, fine. Should we coordinate that with the dump truck as well? Does that make sense to do together?
Nope.
Nope?
I mean, you're going to have completely different buyers.
So a different, uh, different set of auction, okay, fine.
Well, it'll be up to the auction guy.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if he wants to do it as a bit thing, Art's is already in their computer since I had it set up. They don't have any calls set to hold, so I just told him to take it off.
Alright, fine.
But, uh, June 1st, I'll give them a call and say, alright, put it back on.
Alright. As far as your budget, we said last month I wanted to go over with you what your budget is. You're really tight, so I want to understand what outstanding but bills you have for the rest of this month. We can do it later offline.
Okay.
But let's go through those numbers, and I want to make sure if you can delay the next fiscal year, I'd like to do that.
Sure.
Through the pan. Let's have a discussion.
Yep.
Alright? So you'll get that, a meeting with me and you, you want to do that, and with Matt maybe too?
When are you, when are you looking?
I'd like to do it this month, or come on next week and do that. Alright, you guys may have time and date. Okay. And again, nothing, you know, you have things that you're going to pay bills for ongoing. I'm talking about anything extra for, you know, Dan will get out, we're going to talk about that. Alright? Okay, good. Any questions for the fire department? Matt, first, anything you got?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted, uh, you'll get your invitation probably next couple weeks. But the, uh, Fire Department Block Party is July 11th, 12th, and 13th. Pray being on the 13th, 6 o'clock.
Good, okay.
Again, in front of the firehouse. July 11th, 12th, 13th. Week after the 4th of July.
Alright.
The 13th, 6 o'clock.
Correct. Alright, good.
That's all I have for it.
Alright, good. Yes.
Tom, you know, if, is there like a cutoff in terms of either the town's population or size where it would necessitate to either have another station or go to, uh, non-volunteer pay? Is there like a cutoff that you have to do it, or?
No, it's more of, once the calls get too much, that we aren't able to respond promptly.
Decision that you guys made?
Yeah, kind of the county will sit there and start going, hey, you guys aren't making the requirements to remain volunteer. But we're doing pretty good right now. We're nowhere near. Yeah. I think a year before, I think 1,100, 1,200. Or when it gets up there, we can't gently respond to it. That's where I go step there and say something. Yeah.
So why the big drop from 1,100 down to 860?
They must call it down, re-briar.
Oh, re-briar, sure.
Because we're there how many times a day, numerous times a day.
Okay. That 860 is total EMS as well as fire, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's important.
I have to stop.
Yes.
Explain mutual aid happens. Oh, I've heard.
So, are you worried about the EMS ones?
Well, I'm just wondering if we ever ask for it, don't get it, or how it happens.
But, so with the ambulances, because that's more of where it happens. When, say Dover's ambulance goes out on a call, they get a second call. If, uh, they're, well, they don't even have a volunteer ambulance anymore. But there's not an NDP unit that's floating around that happens to be free. They start pulling from mutually, uh, surrounding towns to get that, uh, paramedic status. So they start calling around going, alright, meaning is already busy too. Alright, go to Milbrook, pull theirs. And as they pull, someone else kind of starts drifting this way. For fires, it's more of a call thing unless, uh, say, we didn't get out for a fire alarm, like their dispatch, the county will automatically go, alright, who's supposed to station? Alright, say a tune bail, they'll automatically dispatch the bail that'll come to our call. Most of the, most of the time it's county unless we're requesting something specialized.
It's the county after the third call? We're at the third call?
At the third call, they'll, they'll start adding mutually companies.
Okay.
They're waiting for them first.
Alright. Any more questions? Any questions for the public about the fire report? Okay. Sergeant Rip.
Good evening. In front of you are the, the numbers for April of this, this year. Again, the numbers are low, um, due to the fact that I've been out on a medical. I should be returning next Monday, on Monday. So we should, we should see the numbers go back up a little bit for May. 39 total incidents. We have one, one reported larceny and domestic court protection issued. We assisted other police agencies twice, fire department twice, EMS four times, and did, uh, two court details. Had one, uh, one property damage auto accident, one VNT complaint. Public service, we had a one neighbor dispute that should read two noise complaints. Three lost and found properties, one animal complaint. For community policing, assistance to citizens three times. One of those was, uh, just assisting with the Milbrook Marathon. We weren't specifically requested, but Joe was, Officer Del Judas was out kind of patrolling around while that was going on and just kind of helping out with that.
Alright.
And 12 full patrols completed. Any, any questions on the numbers?
So looking forward to getting back on, on duty.
Uh, myself too.
Yes. Any questions about the report? Just an update on Lexi Paul?
Uh, we're, we're plugging away on Lexi Paul. We, we're completed with all the tier one, uh, policies. We're, I believe, most of the way, we're getting better than half of the way through the tier two policies. Everything that's been approved by the board has now been issued to the members.
Good.
And with that, we, we rolled out the body armor policy and the personal protective equipment policy, which went hand in hand with the, uh, the grant that we're getting through the state for more protective equipment for the active shooter, uh, equipment.
Okay, $10,000.
Yep. So I believe Catherine has everything that she's requested of us currently. So we're waiting to see if and what else she needs.
This is a $10,000 grant we got from Dean Barrett's office. Part of her recent improvement focus. How's the funding working? We're going to, so we have the word of God to purchase it? Will we get the grant refund this fiscal year or not?
Uh, most likely not. It doesn't see, it doesn't seem to be progressing quick enough.
So they can delay the order until the next fiscal year, June 1st?
Most likely. We'll, we'll wait and see what Catherine, what else Catherine needs. And we'll see what the, the timeline on it, on it is, but, yeah.
I prefer to have expense and revenue coming same fiscal year.
Yeah, understandable. And it, it looks like it's just going to play out that way at this point. Because she needed this, 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 this.
Okay.
And we gave it to her. So we're just, the timeline looks like it'll be on next year.
Okay.
The only other update I have is I have, uh, the, the final week of supervisor school up in, uh, Olson County Sheriff's Office. Coming up this fall.
Okay, good. The speed sign?
Speed side is charging and will go up, uh, in the area of Church Street where we've had some complaints again.
About the school traffic?
About the school traffic. The times that it has spent there in the past, we don't generally see, uh, as much of a problem as is perceived. But we'll, uh, we'll have guys patrol over there. The, the problem is they're here in the evening at this point.
Yeah, sure. Well, you'll fix that next week.
Yes.
By the way, the park boundaries is 30 miles an hour going down Church Street, it's just too fast, as you demonstrated when you drove by. And I did ask DOT for an update on the request to change the speed limit on Franklin. And I've not got a response back. I have the policy of the spring, it's late spring now. So at some point, I'm thinking about pulling the plug and just doing it for the rest of the village. And now waiting. The problem with doing that is the highway guys have to do some holding in the concrete sidewalks for us to put signs on the extensions off the Franklin Avenue. This is why I'm reluctant to do that. It'll be on half. Yeah, I can try that. Yeah, okay. I can call it through the office and see. I just put the flash. Because I'll have to know the sponsor. Because the limits already changing within our code, you just have to put the signs up there. Okay, Sergeant Rip, anything else?
No, any other questions for me?
Board, any questions?
Has everyone attested to the policies?
Uh, we had some email issues with two of our, with two of our guys. And those were corrected by, uh, the, the deputy clerk, uh, the other day. So they just, they haven't been back in since the issue has been corrected, but.
The ones that have gotten in have been successful.
Correct.
It's a good thing, so it's durable, you know?
It is, it is. It's, it's a lot of reading, um...
Because you said the core, and it seems like that's true, that 95% of what they read is just affirmation of what they already know.
Correct. Yeah, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing in these policies that really is out of the norm or general patrol work anyway. It's just kind of codifying it and putting it in one place where we have a reference point.
Okay. So Chief, we might talk through the best about what we're looking for from the board, if you take over. I know you're in the transition now, but, um, please stay in touch as we proceed through the, the start date of 6-1. Thanks just for being able to come in and lead us on what the, uh, baseball, how we go on to, alright?
Absolutely.
So you're looking for your leadership in, uh, in this job.
Looking forward to it.
Alright, good. Alright, any more questions for the police? Thank you. Okay. Let's move on. Bob?
Yes. Aside from our normal duties, we have, the new truck is in and working and on the job. The only thing left to do on that is, uh, the decal has to be put on that. Flower barrels were put out and I was told to tell you guys that it's not our usual flowers. The drainings aren't going in this year. So if anybody sees little trees coming out of barrels.
Yeah, what Buffy said is that, um, we have a new person, Mr. Oppenheimer, is taking care of, uh, filling the barrels this year. And you're going to try different, something different from the drains.
Yeah. So that's...
Which is, it's an NDA call, so I could turn it in.
Yeah, so that's why there are a couple people were asking me why, where the drainings were.
Yeah, okay.
And just kind of referred to her.
Yep.
One big change that just happened this month is that we can no longer bring brush and leaves to Hitchcock's farm, uh, along with everybody else who's, who've been doing that. So the town has basically graciously given us, given us permission to bring our brush down to their brush pile.
At least for the rest of this year.
Yeah. Don't know what the future will bring. The majority of the, the big piles seem to have been done already and going to Hitchcock. So we've been just bringing one or two truckloads every couple days over there. Doesn't seem to be a problem. We'll just adhere to their standards and, you know, we're not bringing any kind of stumps or big pieces of trees or anything like that. And we really never did, but.
Okay, good.
That was one of the big concerns. The leaves, um, really don't know what that plan is yet.
Okay, I told you I talked to Tim Race. He's interested in taking the leaves. If he wants to convert them, mulch it, and sell it, which is fine with me. And that's a discussion we'll have later on.
Yeah, we just need to find out what the cost is.
Yeah, we don't know if he wants, if he wants to, uh, us to take them out to his farm on Avenue 2, or if he's willing for us to dump them on Church Street and haul them away. We can have a discussion later.
Yeah, that'll, that'll all depend on.
Well, we go to the gate.
Uh, there are a couple other places to take them, but, uh, if he's willing, that would be great.
Yeah.
Instead of borrowing.
Other places will charge us.
Yeah, Stamfordville.
Right.
And I don't think, he, he picks them up, but again, it's all for...
Yeah, okay.
It's all for a charge.
One caveat, Bob, said to me, by the way, is right now, a lot of the, um, guys that do their, do, uh, domestic work, they haul away the leaves themselves. Now that Hitchcock's becoming available, we expect to see an increase in the amount of leaves that we're up in the village for us to take there. So that's kind of a complicated issue that, that, and it's not, but I think that's a valid concern.
Yeah, the same thing with the brush.
Yeah.
Although it's been, I haven't seen any.
Alright, good.
Anything from them yet. We, they've all talked to me about it. But what can they, I mean, they can't do any more than we can. They have to find out, find resources also.
Sure.
So, uh, if the homeowners are willing to pay, then they'll haul them, but most of them aren't. Aren't willing to do that.
Okay.
We'll just have to see how that works out. As far as what you were saying with the speed signs, the only thing we have to watch is the real narrow sidewalks, because we still have to plow them. And that's, uh, could be a problem.
Okay.
The wide ones, it's not a...
I think that's just a handful. Is that, thinking about it, is that true?
We're putting them on every street, right?
Right. I'm just saying, I think Church Street is a concern.
Well, Church Street, a lot of them will be, um, in the, in the grass, so.
By the deli?
Well...
By the old audio booth?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's...
And of course, I, before we get to it. Yeah, it's an issue.
Depends on how, how many we're going to be putting up, like on Church Street.
Yeah, the, the plan was, if the DOT says no to Franklin Avenue, then we'll put, have to put a sign at every inlet to Franklin. One, one sign at every inlet. Because I recall the community had, you know, concerned I had on Church. Because they always, like you say, there was grass.
Uh, friendly?
Yeah, friendly grass, yeah.
Coming along.
Yeah, between the sidewalk on, on the east side, there's grass.
You put it on the other side of the sidewalk?
Oh, there, no, you're right. There is a grass.
No, it's certain places.
Alright, we'll put aside all the... That's a handful to put in a...
Yeah.
Alright.
And the brush season ends on the 31st. And have we decided on only one summer brush pickup?
We, we include that as part of the budget. That'll be September, right?
It'll be September, okay.
Yes.
It'll be September, okay. And that has gone out to the public?
Not yet.
Okay.
Other than, you know, through publication of the, um, the budget. I'll put a note in the newsletter.
Yeah.
And I'll just call and put something out as well.
Yeah. Uh, the all across walks and stop bars have been painted, other than the states. That's, I made a call, but I don't know if they're gonna adhere to their policies. So you might wanna make, that, your call might make an impact.
For what?
To get them to paint there.
Oh, for them to do on Franklin.
Yeah, all on Franklin.
Do you have a contact with D O T?
Uh, I do.
You had one up at the cleaning station, I recall, which was very, uh, cooperative. Did you get that number from you?
Yeah, I will get it.
I'm telling you truth, it's not even more time than you paid back. I love a lot of those.
Oh, yeah, right, it's a matter of...
We've got to call about that first and then, and then talk about the, the class case. Okay.
That's, uh, that's all I have.
Any questions for Bob?
Just, just looking, do we have estimates on the cost of repaving Washington in summer?
I do, but we're still waiting on the, uh, cost of excavating the storm drain.
How did the cameras look on that for the drain?
They did that last week. We're waiting for the report. And that's, that's gonna determine a lot of the cost. Uh, so we can find out what's, what's plastic and what's, uh, what's the rotted metal part of it. Hopefully it's just the middle. But I had to do the whole street, so we'll...
Now, did they do the analysis or do you have to look at the video and do the analysis yourself?
No, they, they, you won't say what it is.
Yeah.
We'll have to look at it.
We'll do that, okay.
They'll send the whole report, I...
Yeah, they'll send, they'll send you, uh, video.
Yeah.
And with that will be paperwork with basically all image of the storm drain with catch basins. And any issues will be denotated on there based off the footage from where the cameras started.
Okay. I mean, I've asked the two guys, is the idea of patching, is that, is that feasible?
The idea of what?
Of, so with patching as opposed to replacing the whole thing?
Oh, no. No, these are, these are pipes like this.
Okay.
And the only thing you could look at, now I don't know what it would cost, but similar to what the sewer lines, I'm pretty sure they do storm drains the same way.
Oh.
Not positive.
Okay.
I can certainly ask them.
All right. Yeah, great.
If they want.
Leave them?
Yeah.
It depends on how bad the, how bad it's crushed.
Right.
Because that, we have that dip in the middle there and that's what's making me think it's crushed, but...
Lots of times they don't even have bottoms in the pipe.
Yeah.
Something there. Yeah, especially the metal.
I'm sorry, can I, what'd you say?
A lot of the times the bottom of a, of a metal pipe don't even have the bottom. There's something there. It's just...
No, fine, you're fine.
No, 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 it's not.
Oh, it's metal.
Yeah, I know, so...
All right.
I mean, you won't know till you, you see the video and inspection report.
All right, then the board has to decide because the question is, my preference would be us to proceed down, get ready to do, if not this year, then next year. As opposed to going to another road. We can talk about that once we know the impact, the, the cost. We have a cost by a ton raise to replace the entire storm drain, right?
Yes.
The question is, is there some cheaper version of that that's gonna be just as good? Because once we're paid, I don't wanna go back and do it.
I know, that's the whole idea, that's...
So that's a decision when it comes to which is, you need to park, just park it now this year, and pay it next year. We're gonna go look somewhere else. My preference is the same.
We could have the bit, so... We could have to wait, right?
We would have to put up, but I guess, yeah, we've got a quote from Tim.
Yeah, no, we still have to go out the bit, but I wanted to wait till now to find out exactly what needs to be done. You'll have to rebid it if it's, if it's a shorter distance.
Yeah.
So maybe you just have to rebid it.
All right, I think by next month we can, yeah, make a decision.
We'll have to, yeah. You gotta move it, re-quick now. If you, you were just saying, if we don't do it this year, you still, or wasn't it?
My thought is, if we can't afford to replace the storm drain and pave it, then we replace the storm drain only this year. Using chip sponges and come back and pave it next year. As opposed to go pave something else.
You have a big open, well...
Well, I'll ask the question, do we have a...
The road is not gonna be here.
Well, the road's all, you know, anyway.
It's gonna be, I'm, I'm planning on fixing a bunch of the water valves. You're gonna have all that anyway.
Oh, okay, good. Which you should do.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's in the, in my budget for this year. So you're gonna have all this, these spots along the road anyway. Plus the manholes, that's gonna be through the top slopes.
Okay. So let's decide once we know what we're looking at. That's always my preference. Because it's a high-volume road that we're using.
Because of the water line, for the, right?
What water line? For Lee Wood. Oh, yeah, so that's them, that's not us. But that has to be done too. And if they're gonna delay that, we're, you're not gonna wanna pave the road. I don't know where they are with their project.
Okay.
They gotta go all the way across the road and tap the water line.
All the way across, oh, okay, that's right.
Yeah, it's on the other side.
He told me it would be done very soon, but...
All right, all right. I was assuming it was gonna be this, this year before, you know, I've got the point of faith. But you're right, that is a, it's a, to make sure that's...
They gotta do the water end this summer.
Right. And then Bob, can you describe what the, 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 the eight avenue with the water and storm drain in the street?
Uh, yeah, there's a, a house on Pete that, uh, has been twenty-four hour a day basically running a pump that's been going into the street. In the summer, it's not that big of a deal. In the winter, it, it was coming halfway out into the street and freezing. Uh, so I asked him to, uh, find a, a way to remedy that. He came up with nothing that really made any sense. But, um, we went and met with the contractor that he has. And the, uh, storm drain is very close to the property. So his contractor feels that he can go underneath the road only maybe a foot and tap into that, uh, into that, that storm drain. And instead of having the, the water running today.
About damage is being terminated as well.
Right, because that road was just paved twice also. We don't want him cutting into it. But he, he thinks he can wonder it and assure us that he's gonna shore it up so that it doesn't, doesn't sink.
Okay.
Shouldn't be a big excavation at all.
Josh, can we pass a law that requires people to run their some pumps either into a sewer drain or they put a bill for our cleanup?
There's a couple ways to go about it and...
Keep going over this like every, three months.
So, specific to that question, I was thinking about that, creating a hazardous condition like that. We could specify in the code that the zoning enforcement officer, the code enforcement officer, has the authority to issue a violation. Take them to court. If they don't comply, you can fine them. There's ways to have a code enforcement officer assess damages if you have to fix the problem yourself. So I think we're gonna talk about this a little further down on, on the other...
We'll talk about what you're saying.
And, and this was exactly my thoughts was, you gotta talk about something that isn't just gonna address one specific situation. But it is, is suitable for all these things that come up, like a pump that's, uh, putting water out, they're probably gonna freeze during a hazardous condition like that.
Yeah. So there shouldn't be a requirement to go into a su, a storm drain.
Yeah.
But there should be a requirement that they, they contain whatever way, dry well, whatever. Something that can self-contain, it doesn't affect...
Right.
The, 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 those roadways.
Or the neighbors.
Or the, the...
And I think, I think, like a lot of things, I think, so as it stands right now, even under the Commonwealth, you can't do that. You can't direct water from your property onto someone else's property, whether it's the municipality or another neighbor. So, I mean, there's always that. And I know there's a reluctance to say, okay, let's, you know, let's just sue everybody, but you don't want that. But if you, if you have something in your code that allows the code enforcement officer to issue a violation for people that don't comply, I think that's your best, that's your best bet. So we have to tune up the code and we can talk more about that.
Linden Lane was the perfect example. They figured out another way to do it. It just, it had to be...
By the way, they had a case to say that it was their neighbors that was flooding his basement.
Yep.
But anyway, he fixed it anyway based on the storm and...
But it's still running.
It's still running, so, um... So the proposal was a code update, zoning code update to require people to self-contain whatever, any discharge from their...
Yeah, that, that and more broad language to cover other things, like allowing gravel driveways to wash out into the road.
Or be plowed out into the road.
Be plowed out into the road. I mean, there's, there's broad language.
Oh, okay, good. Well, we can, so all those, all right, fine. Yeah, right, we're fine.
I mean, technically, you're not supposed to plow your driveway into the road. But they do, you know, and it's, it's the contractors that do it.
Right.
Uh, but we had that problem right on Franklin Avenue.
That's right. My fault, yeah.
Yeah. You have something in the code now that says residents have to keep their, you know, the sidewalks in front of their residents. And I think the road as well, free of debris.
Yeah.
Just, we just, we just have to tune it up a little bit and make sure that you're not in a situation where somebody says, well, snow is not debris. Well, yes, it is.
So, so this one was, they plowed the gravel from the driveway as well.
Yeah.
It was.
I got you.
Yeah. All right, good. So we're, um, actually Josh had asked that we have executive sessions tonight to talk about two of those issues on the agenda. One is the old, the rain and as well as the green block. So if you don't mind, we'll end the meeting with the, the executive session. Should be allowed to be short, just for, right, place. So just focus on, yeah. Don't mind if we do it. Okay, more questions for Bob and Oliver, Bob? Okay, thank you. Scott?
All right. The water for April, uh, we fixed a curb box on Maple Avenue.
I'm sorry, Keith, you're welcome to go as well with...
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate all your time and consideration.
Next month.
See you next month.
Did you get a family picture? Do you want a family picture?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah?
What do you want?
Oh, okay. I feel like... You want one of those? You want one of those?
Derek, you might leave or...
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, well, Sarah's going up, we can, we can line, Scott. Oh, wait, is that cameras shooting or...
Yes.
All right, Scott. All right, Scott, you go ahead?
Sure.
Yeah, right.
Now that everybody left, see how four and nine.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so we fixed a curb box on Maple Avenue, uh, plus all the fire hydrants. And we shut off the water and then it cooled for our broken service line, which is, well, it's still not gonna issue, but...
Is that all right?
It's my fault, guys. Sorry.
All right.
I got a phone call from Patrick. Yes.
Oh, really?
When I was off, yes.
All right.
It's been fixed. It took care of it. I fixed it.
Oh, okay, so that's, that's... All right. Questions for Scott on the water? All right, sewer.
Okay. Um, so we had the Rith Careholdt, uh, slug. Uh, had both millimeters of the sewer plant calibrated as per, we do that every year. Um, and we started cleaning the slug drying though. Not quite for the last time, but hopefully.
All right.
I'm, I'm, I'm debating it, actually.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Why?
Well, it takes six months or more for it to dry. So if we project the start of the upgrade sometime at the beginning of twenty twenty-six,
All right.
we're still cleaning them, but that, I'm debating whether we stop and I can get a better idea of how much liquid we're gonna be hauling out, budget it properly. So I'm debating it.
Interesting, all right.
At, at, at worst, the last time we, we use them will probably be this, this fall. Because I, I don't wanna be entering the process down the road.
All right, good. So, um, as everybody knows, we've, uh, chosen Ty and Bond to be the, uh, project lead for the upgrade. And we're pursuing a contract with them to, uh, start the engineering work. I, um, submitted to Pat Ryan's office a request for a number of money to reduce to some degree anyway. The, um, costs to, to come to the residents once the project is completed. We've offered a budgeting about a forty, fifty percent, oh, increase required in sewer bills in order to fund the payoff for the business. Once the project is done, talking twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Maybe we can get from number of monies to, uh, pursuit. Um, this time, by the way, to, uh, garner support, I, I think I got a support letter from Georgia, which was appreciated. And I also got letters of support from my father of, Tom, Lyle, and, um...
Black Hawk?
Black Hawk, the great.
No.
Say great. Whalen?
What was it?
George Whalen.
Oh, yeah, George Whalen, I'm sorry. George Whalen, as well as Rob Dyson, who wrote a letter, but he promised to make a phone call. Which I think we didn't, we, but, so we're trying a different angle just to get people to, uh, tickle the ideas of, uh...
That's Ryan.
That's Pat Ryan. You know, by the way, Pat Ryan's, um, staff, Dan Torres, actually sent me a special email to say, by the way, we missed your last time. Don't forget to apply this information. It's encouraging, no promises of course. Just to let you know, we're still pursuing everything we can. Try to reduce the burden that's gonna follow in the residence to go through this ten million dollar bill. Um, another thing to note is that with selecting Ty and Bond to engineer the upgrade, I did get a confirmation from the C E O of Delaware that they will commit and get the South River Pump Station completed. Okay. One of the complaints I had with them was, the, the project was dry. And he promised that they would get this and go. So I'm expecting them to follow me there. And expect to be done in the next three months. But that was just this off, off the top of this. One question I have to use, Scott, is with the new proposal for the upgrade, is the Dino filter part of that plan? So should we put it out for auction?
Sure.
Let's see why not.
So Mike, recall, we purchased this a few years ago. Um, it had to sit in there, nice ten by ten by ten, um, piece of metal. But from what I recall, it was refurbished, ready to go. I think we should, um, put it out for, for auction.
Yeah, well, the issue at the time was the fact that, uh, P C was concerned about the amount of phosphorus that they felt might be going into the street. Well, it's totally, as far as operators on area contention, but we're using a Dino, Dino sample. We're supposed to eliminate that, but if we're gonna get a system that achieves the same results and basically gets the phosphorus down to zero, then it becomes old technology and there's no reason to keep it around and back it up. I think we officially purchased, purchased for about mid-thirties.
Right, exactly.
You know, so, you know, if we purchased it for the mid-thirties, uh, six, seven years ago, it's still gotta be worth something.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks very much.
All right.
Any loss to your hit board?
I know, why not?
Someone gave you ten grand for it.
Right. Okay, good. So then can I pursue with any auctions to have him come and take a look at it?
Yeah, sure.
Is it, is it crated up? Do they, they think they have it uncrated or...
No, it's just sitting there.
Okay, fine.
I mean, they wanna look on the inside, they sorta make sure you buy, you know, it's not bad.
All right, so can I have him contact you? Did it sound important to come take a look at it? Okay, great. Why not? Yeah.
Can't hurt.
Okay, good. Any questions for Scott pursuing? Okay, so that was all set. Thank you. Okay, Sarah, go to your board.
Okay. All righty. So, building department for April, we issued four billing permits, one certificate of occupancy. And these collected was $1,190. We are, I think we're pretty much ready for the SDR application. I think we're just waiting on the activated. Which Ken asked me for the code and something else, so I, I emailed that to him yesterday.
Okay, good. So that's all going to go on Hango. The temp is already out there. Actually, someone's tried to, tried to use it.
Yes, yeah.
Which is good. But we're getting ready to go live on June 1st.
Yeah, and Nicole's going to make a little section on the website in, in building department to kind of make it stand out and like make the link easier to find.
Okay, good.
So that'll be, that'll be helpful.
I need to make notes in the newsletter.
Yeah.
And of course, that's an option to use Hango. They can come to the office as well.
Right, but they'll get a discount if they take it.
Right, five percent?
I don't remember what he said. It's, it's in a note somewhere.
Okay, fine.
Just on the SDRs while we're here. In terms of Granicus, we're all getting set up on Granicus. Our, we sent the parcel data file to, to them. They're like setting up our web environment. It's already live. I already see properties there. It's a very easily navigable website.
Okay.
So we're going to get Sarah and Ken access as well, and Justin if he needs it. But from the technology front, that's, that's all being, we're making progress.
All right, good. And how many have they shown as active?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Right on. Okay.
Sorry, Sarah.
Okay.
Oh, no, it's fine.
All right.
I did, I did make a username and password, and I did see that, but I just didn't have a chance yet to, to look at the program to get trained. We will have to swear Justin in before he starts. And the only thing I have is the resolution for.
Yes, let's do that now. So this is something that we sent out an email to you earlier, which was an update of the fees for the planning and the zoning bill. Which has been not updated for many, many years. This is a good effort on Frank Wills' part, and you went ahead and looked at his zoning as well, which I appreciate that. Any questions with the, the new column, which is the first column that goes with the fees up? I think you basically looked at others, including the town of Washington.
Yeah.
As a kind of a benchmark.
Yep.
To show, you know, is comparable to that.
Yeah, and the escrows were seriously underfunded.
Yes.
Like we had to chase people for money, so.
Which is a real pain.
Yeah, this, this is definitely more in line with what we need.
Any questions about the proposed fee schedule? Are we, should we take a vote? Let's see, okay, who, who'll make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Okay.
Okay, so we go vote call?
Mayor Gobby?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Goer?
Aye.
Jesse Herzad?
Aye.
Jesse Cantino?
Aye.
Jesse Murphy?
Aye.
All right.
Very good. All right.
So.
Treasure report?
So for treasure, um.
Boy, before you go there, I think I notified you that I'd asked and appointed Mark Vila to be the new chair of the ZBA. And he's identified Keith DeGale as the person who, I expressed images before in the planning board position. And I just contacted him last night. I really haven't done too bad for that. So first, we're going to offer the vacancy of Mark Vila's before that position in ZBA. Any problems with that? What's the point of position? Why don't you plan to make that? Okay? All right, thanks.
Yeah, so if they'll, if, if you want to just reach out to them to come and do oath of office.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. So. For treasure, you'll see the Thorn Trust is, we return those funds.
Okay.
So we made good on that. And let's see what's. I think everything else is pretty standard. We, I explained in my notes that in order to start collecting taxes in June, we have to clear out the tax account. So we just, we transfer it to general.
Okay.
The whole amount. But we're still having the MIR classes still sitting and collecting.
Good, all right. The re-leveys you received, right, for the water sewer?
Oh, the, the, to make us whole?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
That total what?
I don't, uh, well, the only thing that made us whole was like, I think I have here.
Your money?
Oh, yeah. Uh, I got a check for $6,461.93.
Okay.
So, but we had already transferred the re-levee money.
All right, good.
To water sewer.
All right.
So that, we're all set with that. And, yeah. So I'm also, I have everything to the county so that they can start printing the bills. So they'll let me know probably in a week or so that I can go pick them up.
Okay.
And I had to report for ARPA. Even though we completed the project, I still have to do it for like five years or something.
Is that right?
Yes.
All right.
I, I think they're making it, um, I, when I went on and I finished, they said, it looks like you're completing your project. And I said, yes, so hopefully next year it's just like a really easy thing.
Most, most municipalities haven't completed the project.
Yeah.
So they're still, you know.
Yeah, well, they probably got a sizable amount.
All right.
Compared to what we got. And then the installation dinner was wonderful. I would have thanked Matt, but he's gone.
Okay.
And, um, and I just have one more person to sign.
Okay, fine.
And she's always my holdout, so she's fully aware.
On this table here, the FEMA money is in MIR class. Where does it go? Is it the A Fund?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not in the reserve. It's in the A Fund.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in, it's on the balance sheet.
Fine. So it'll show up as a benefit to the current fiscal year?
Correct.
Good. I don't want to roll over. That's good.
Yep.
Any questions for Sarah regarding the treasure report?
Just a quick question about tennis courts for how $4,000 in the 23, 24 budget. For the next budget coming up, you're going to get for the 24, 25 budget. So is that also an MIR class?
Yes.
Fund as well?
Yep.
Yeah, you see it right there. That's in the top table. All those entries are there are in class.
Yep.
Okay, so a tennis court, $2, I just look for that.
That was like leftover.
That's like the maintenance stuff, the nets need to replace that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
That's separate from the reserve.
Yeah.
Okay. Before I forget, I should have raised it when Bob was here. I heard from Stockton a couple of months ago. The fence we talked about before, the fence of the tennis court is curling up.
Oh, yes.
It's curled up in a lot of spots. The ball's going under. And now if you have some money, maybe it makes sense to release. Like Bob had mentioned, they.
There's a tent, there's a tension wire that you can put on the bottom. And then be able to attach it to the pole. So that's basically supposed to keep it pretty well set. But you got to be able to install it, not go block it, do that. It's helping include or not, like we have to get. You know, add a fencing or something like that to have it.
Well, Peter, can you contact someone? You're going to quote what that would cost?
Should we have Bob look at it first? Or if not?
Sure, we can do that. Okay, fine. I seem like I've, I've been in a floor where there was some department for a tool that the guys who did the new services had a. And this is me hearing from Bob. We talked to the guys.
It would account the whole mold.
Yeah, you're correct. All right.
Get a quote.
So look, I, I can ask Bob to find out what it takes for him to do it versus getting a quote.
As I said, it's not, maybe you can't do it. It's not something that I've done myself, but I mean, talking about a wire cable from pole, 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 pole. And it's, you know, it's not just a quote, I know.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And don't forget they're shorthanded.
Oh, yeah, right, this month. Yeah, right. And Darren saved all his vacation for the last month. Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's see, move on. So let's go to old business. Mike, can you give us update on the sidewalk?
Yes. In terms of the sidewalk, there was work done on the ramp over by the Alpaca store. That's basically complete at this point. The only thing that could be done at that, at that site is the metal plates that were part of the ramp itself. Were extremely rusty and I was told that the new inserts, they come in rusty like that. As a possibility, if you want to make them look nicer, that we could use epoxy. And both, both the engineering, engineering department that we work with. And DOT said you should probably wait a little bit to see what happens as, as time goes on. See if they're, you know, get better, so to speak. But I think that's something that we may have to look into. It's not a big deal.
I think it looks better than it did before. I'd like to wait and see how, how it ages.
Yeah, well, that's, that's my point is that we may have to go back and re-visit.
Yeah, the idea of paint just sounds too temperate to me. Might have to see if this works as it is.
Okay.
It was not slippery odds.
No, no, it's just.
It does its purpose.
Yeah, if you serve that purpose, it does look great.
Okay.
And the next thing that has to happen as the, as the crosswork, we have to put new striping in and take out the old striping. And that's supposed to be done by Rennie, I'm looking into and working with Sun Corporation. Where the provider is to go ahead and do that. That's not something that Sun does by itself. It's a subcontractor.
Yeah, that's the crossfranklin on French Street there.
Yeah.
That crosswalk. Just because we changed the angle of entrance into the street.
Right, so also the old book, the other's going to have to get scrubbed out, ground out, and then we want to put stripe and put in.
Okay.
Okay, and that's standard procedure. The other, the last thing is we're going to be planting trees, obviously. And I have a tentative date of May 17th from local gardens to plant. Drop also a check for them tomorrow as proposed for the trees that are being purchased. And hopefully then we'll be providing by the end of the month, we can actually be able to, you know, call this done.
Yeah. So that's a week from Friday is the, is the target date. Is that a one day process?
Yes.
One day, okay, good.
That's it.
Okay.
And I've asked, I've asked Rennie Engineering to send any specs for planting to me. So I can then pass them on to local gardens, although it's typically standard in terms of all those there.
Okay, good.
And DOT came by inspecting the job post, done with cement construction and said it's fine.
Okay, good. So then the trees will be the end?
Trees hopefully be the end.
Okay.
Okay. Then we can be able to find out exactly when the striping is going to be. Could be soon or could be later.
So we don't get a final bill from Sun until they complete the crosswalk? Is that true?
Yes, far as I know.
Okay. We haven't got any early bills from that department?
No.
I don't see this month.
The last thing we got was a, was a bill for a concrete test run.
Yes.
That I passed on.
Right. Which is in there.
Which is in there.
Okay.
And pursuant to that, once that, once that's done, the next step is I have to pull the county and find out when we can make applications to start. Phase three and four, unless I make an application.
Well, I want to work with Pat on that. I've sent an email to Ewen, what's his last name, the guy that does camera. Asking for a meeting with Pat and myself, just to go through that process.
Great. Yeah, that, that.
I may hopefully in for historical perspective, but we might have to pick up the ball there.
Oh, no, absolutely.
And it shouldn't be a big deal. Famous last word. But my plan is it's not a big deal, but I just urge you to be better into that, I tell you.
Yeah, no, he should, he should. Because, you know, in '25, if you apply in the, in '24, and you get a grant and need and a call. Then we will need more construction until '21.
Right.
So you have to have some.
Right. That, that's the clear. That's the most I could. Good. Mike, any else?
No, the rest are on my, I know we said.
Okay, good. Got any update on the connection, the sidewalk from?
Yeah, I talked to him last week. He said he was three or four weeks out last week, so he's probably two.
All right, fine. Okay, good.
And then I also, I don't know if you noticed, but they repaired that dam over on the condo.
No, I didn't know that.
Yeah, they, they had the material brought in and repaired that.
All right, good. He promised you.
Were you guys aware of this? The dam kind of washed out over.
Where?
Over out Bennett.
In the woods?
They have a pond back there and it didn't fully wash out, but it was starting to.
Wow.
Water was going up over the dam.
Yeah, the drain was plugged there.
Drain's plugged. Drain's still plugged.
Is that right?
Yeah. They're, they're using spillway for their water, but it's filled in. It's not going to wash out.
Yeah, I talked to the president of the condo association because I was concerned if it broke.
Yeah.
That they can flood the.
Pump stations, pump stations right below.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, could be. All right, good. Thanks for the update on that. We're going to skip the next two topics because I want to have an executive session talking about Green Drive and Old Orchard. Let's talk about new business. So first topic is the town of Washington overlay proposals. So Peter, why don't you take the lead on that discussion?
I think I've mentioned to the board a couple of times that, you know, the council within this whole deal process, looking at hospitality in the town. And they have decided on three sites. And part of their prerogative is to seek and, and work with the village on, on feedback. On these sites and just hospitality more generally. One of these sites is right outside the village, right across the street. And per Mike's NRI that Phil mentioned, and he knows better than I do. But part of it sits on a major aquifer. We had already told this site that they could hook up for residential purposes, but we, they could not hook up for commercial purposes. If that site were to be developed, it would be a subject. And that subject might have a lot of trouble getting heard in just having a, a safe system. And it's right near Village Water. And so I think if the village board is being sought, you know, our opinion on this particular site. I would have, you know, kind of pretty serious concerns about allowing hospitality on the site. It's, it's a pretty sensitive environmental area, so I think the board should consider repercussions of that.
Yeah, Mike, the NRI report shows it as a preparing area, since I didn't know what it was until I reached the NRI. Very interesting, in fact, there's an aquifer in there that goes under the road into the village. The fact is that 343 is a known flood area.
Right.
Down that area, right, which is a concern. And as Peter said, the idea of putting multifamily anything there, given the limited space and not being, opening a sewer. A subject system is just not, it's just not, that's what we should support. So I think what I want to do is I want to get a motion from the board for me to respond to the town's request. To say that we don't support the hospitality overlay in that spot.
I'll make that motion.
In a second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do we notice? As I told Deputy Mayor, I want to contact Gary tomorrow by phone. Time I'm going to bring it to the board verbally tomorrow to board meeting and a documented after that. Just as a heads up tomorrow.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
You all know what you're talking about, but you might want to say on the record, get to the sites you're.
So that's the side at the corner of Haciom 343.
Yeah.
Okay. Which again is outside the village, right across the road. All right, thanks for my clarification. All set there? The next one? We probably have to start.
I think more generally, with the village and the town, you know, kind of changing a lot. And large parcels possibly being put up for sale in both the town and the village. The mayor and I discussed the possibility of, you know, taking a closer look at the zoning in some of these areas more generally. Spending some time utilizing experts if needed in land use and hydrology and wherever other. The NRI would be a great resource for that. And what a lot of communities do during that process is they put a development moratorium in. While the board, you know, seeks help. and while the board, you know, seeks help in regards to that. So I think that's something that the village board could consider to the extent we can in our jurisdiction.
So right now Hitchcock's, part of Hitchcock's is in the village, right? It's zone RU with the.
I don't know if it's RU. I checked again and I think it's a different connotation. But either way, I forget what the vote is.
We should find out. Okay, but anyway, your point is let's get ahead of the curve. If they are seriously looking at selling property, which could be developing property, and why not have us put a moratorium in place allowing us to decide what we're gonna do to our zoning code to mitigate, to reduce development?
And I think most especially in regards to the N R I as well. You know, there's a map in here that speaks to the village aquifer's watershed area and it goes right through.
Yes.
Goes right through. So any development there would have to be, you know, to the extent we could take a look at it, I think we would be concerned about that as well from a water perspective.
Okay. All right, so Josh, to put a moratorium in place for future development, what does that require? Resolution?
A resolution? Are you thinking of a comprehensive plan?
No, I'm thinking about a moratorium so we can update our zoning code.
Okay, no, I know. Sometimes they do moratorium. It sounded like.
I think maybe a future board, I think it's been a long time. So I think a future board might be interested in at least looking at.
Sure. The problem with this company is, man, that opens a whole Pandora's box of things that's outdated, right? I'd rather avoid that and work on something we can affect, which is our zoning code.
You still have to have public hearings on that, so you don't avoid that. So maybe, you know, yeah, it's much more manageable, I suppose, if you have specific objectives and still a sure moratorium while you're updating your code.
All right, so Peter, could you document to Ian or Josh just what we're looking for so they can work out into a resolution?
And just for the, I will.
Okay.
And just for the board's consideration as well, this wouldn't affect current proposals that are before the zoning or planning board. It wouldn't affect when Josh struck me in front of the honor. It wouldn't affect like traditional building permits for just your average whatever. This is more focused on subdevelopment and larger kind of development.
Okay.
And I would want that to be clear in the.
All right, good. The one thing about is when I looked at the RU district, I see it's five acre zoning. And I'm thinking about that's increasingly ten acres, something like that, just to reduce the amount of development that could occur. That's just off the top of my head, but that's kind of a concept I want to get to.
Yeah, there's a lot of nuances to all that.
Yeah, okay. We need to work right, because last time everyone in the village board did a moratorium and it didn't happen or some stupid thing.
Okay.
We have to do it right. Any problems or questions for the board regarding that context? I think it's a good idea to get ahead of the curve. I appreciate you clearing it up. Okay, trustee Herzog, we have a resolution from the N R I. You want to take it in there?
Sure. This is, we have the resolution to basically do what in plain language we should be doing. And that is now that we have, now that we have a very good rigid guide on exactly what the environmental factors we have to deal with, we should be able to take the N R I graph and the map and make sure we're applying the law to the planning department and other departments, make use of the documents and make use of the considerations that are in the discussion happening right now where you would put a hospitality site and spot zone in would have a very definite effect on making sure that the environment you're putting in is going to be conducive for what you're going to do. And it sounds like a no brainer, but if you really want to have long range, healthy environment, then you have to be able to make a commitment that you're gonna have at times. Look at some of these and makes a very difficult choice, controversial choice. Because it's that we have to be aware of exactly what we have as natural resources and can take care of them or pay the consequences, you know. I'd like, I hope you all enjoy trying to getting a chance at least to get the inventory and so. I live a lot of common dangers.
Despite my sarcastic comments at the start, I find it very informative.
The maps are really cool.
Yeah, I have to tell you, slide and plus a piece of wood.
Yeah, and it took a lot of time with a lot of people and a lot of help by experts. Came in and helped us from the D C and from Neil Walker.
Correct.
And it's really kind of helped school us in it. It was a lot of time, a great effort. And I'm really kind of proud of the way it came out.
You should.
Future boards can make great use of it and use it plenty of parts to make.
Is it online? Is the copy of this online?
Yes.
It is? Okay. So we can post it on our website somewhere?
Yeah, I have to just make sure that the right version is on.
Okay, fine, let's do that. I can get it on the website.
Multiple graphs and I'd like to make sure that what we got and what we've signed is exactly that.
Okay.
It speaks to what a special and unique place that we live in that I didn't necessarily, you know, appreciate to the extent that I even knew about all those different areas. And I want to keep it that way.
I agree.
You know, so it'll be a helpful tool.
Already we've used it as a reference point for companies discussing that, so very good. All right. So Mike, do we make a motion that we adopt the resolution? Any questions about the resolution itself, which basically says, here's the documentation and we're gonna use it as appropriate, money board, C P As, trustees, as we see fit in the future? Any problems with that?
No.
So Mike, why don't you make the motion?
I'll make the motion that the board adopt the N R I, including any adjoining maps to be used by all municipal agencies. And the board's going to propose to make decisions about policy and decisions on zoning and both.
Peter, a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Mary Colby?
Aye.
Deputy Maria Duro?
Aye.
Jesse Herzog?
Aye.
Jesse Cantino?
Aye.
Jesse Murphy?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, Mike, next is the benchmarking for greenhouse gas monitoring. Now, I wanted to have either Jen or Elizabeth here, but can you tell the board what we're trying to accomplish with that?
Yeah, briefly.
Will we bring a resolution to the next board meeting?
Yeah, briefly, one of the things that we, that Jen and I got involved in was something called the greenhouse gas inventory. What it does is you take all of your carbon based things that you have used in the course of the year, such as fuel, electricity and anything of that nature, and you make a total and say, okay, over the course of the year, this in 2023, this much fuel oil, heating oil, gasoline for our cars, and a proxy for the capital. And they track it and that gets translated into a carbon amount, carbon offset, okay? And what people from clean, clean energy companies want us to be able to do is to not just do this once, but to use what we've done this year in 23, that year in 23, to be a baseline and then continue to do this in 24 and 25. And all the information you need is very readily available. Most of it is on the central like the statement we get every month on not only the kind of sources we are using for, you know, for our fuel or whatever, but also what that translates to in carbon use. And the goal being, since we've taken the climate, climate smart communities pledge to try to reduce that if we can, then they just want us to be able to continue to benchmark this going forward.
Yeah, there's no penalty for lack of progress.
Yeah.
But it is a commitment by the board to continually monitor on a regular basis how we're doing.
Right.
All right.
Who's gonna be doing this?
Okay, that's the question.
That's the question going forward now.
So what I expect is this, that Jen Glasson is gonna be handed the time off to someone. Mike will be meeting with Jen and a candidate at the discussion this month. And what we need is the board to agree that yes, going forward, we will support you continue to pull together this annual benchmarking data. So let's go back to next month for resolution. We will make that proposal.
So who's gonna be doing it?
The person we have to advise.
A volunteer.
Right.
Just build a building, all by, all by yourself.
Yeah, they're separate.
They're separate.
They're going separate, yes.
I don't know if they've done greenhouse gas inventory yet. I'm not aware. If they're separate, they're separate. I think they have not done that much gas here and it hasn't been fine or not. That's something that going forward, we try to work together and a lot of this we don't need. But it's fine enough. We mentioned we have a shared, but they are going to be separate, separate then. And the key is gonna be, and I want to emphasize this, no one's gonna come knocking at the door saying, they should report in 2022 or sometime 25 and then come out with a sweat on. And it's gonna be a matter of trying to keep track of it, but it hardly serves the fact that this is gonna get done potentially by municipal employees or by funding. So it's not something that's gonna be, that's not gonna be a fundamental guarantee.
Yes, we would have a focal point identified. And the board should have, you know, continuing oversight, whatever.
Is it reported anywhere? Like the state?
Yes, it goes, it goes to the county and the county has their own, has their own numbers and they can, they can put into their numbers and then they can calculate it also. So that, you know, you can look at the number of municipalities and the county book to find out if they're probably putting what they're doing to a different point. So it does get shared and goes at least to the county book. And I can't say, I would think the state would.
Okay. Okay, that's a follow up for next one. All right, let's go to public comments. No one's here for public comment. Let's move on to the board member updates. Deputy Brad?
I have one, one issue I'm looking into. A couple of people have come to me about having chickens in the village. Our code does not allow it.
Right.
But a lot of, and I looked into it, a lot of smaller municipalities on Long Island, in New York City and upstate as well, have allowed them under certain conditions. No roosters, setbacks, whatever. I'm gonna do a little more research and I'll report back to the board.
All right. Right now it's, in the code is not allowed.
Fowl is not allowed in most districts.
And so on most of them, okay.
Like RU, I think it is.
All right, so the first step would be for them to go to, probably the Z B A, right?
I guess they would need some sort of areas.
All right, so you can do some research and talk to all the ladies.
A lot of people are interested in it, you know, a lot of people are like homesteading and, you know, having chickens for eggs.
The village seems like the best thing as well.
I'll report back.
Okay, fine, yeah, okay.
If it was like a loud, dirty thing, I would not, but apparently it's, that's kind of like a common misconception.
Sure. Question what?
I don't know.
Well, just so you know, there's a, like, if you go to Tractor's Flight, there's a six chicken minimum. So you cannot walk out with anything less than six chickens.
And two bucks a chicken.
Yeah, yeah. But all the other stuff is very expensive.
Interesting, okay. I can't wait. Okay, trustee Herzog?
Two quick, three quick, three quick things. Mayor and I had a conversation yesterday with Brian Semple.
Oh, yeah.
And he has given us a proposal that, that he confirmed yesterday that he could be able to take 75 non LED lights that currently are in the village and be able to outfit them with LED lights with the same light string that would be in those lights currently, so you're not gonna get, you're not gonna go from, you're not gonna go from soft, soft yellow to like bright white, like, you know, whatever, whatever strength of bulb is there is gonna be duplicated in LED. The total cost for us would be, based on question numbers, would be $8,758. He said you would see a, you would see the savings approximately $3,163 per year to pay that back and to the, to the two or three, four years of making money back. And on top of that. They last, they last so much longer than, you know, than the other standard sodium lights do. And on top of that, we've also had, had Elizabeth's son from Clean Energy reach out and let us know that if we do, we can bang some of the things we've already done and include that and be eligible for either a $5,000 or $5,000 and $10,000 grant to complete four things. And we've already completed, of the list she has, three of the four things. So this would be four. One is EV charger, which we installed and now operational. The other one is energy code, which we've traced and traced, which has, we had qualified to do. And the third one would be having the, having the transition go to be a 50% LED. And that would be, that would be enough to put us over the top, over 1,000 points to be able to qualify for as much as $10,000. So it sounds to me like a great proposal. We, in the conversation, we made very clear, Semple has still those lights, they're still under the pole. We charge all the maintenance, we're not taking on any responsibility of making the switch just to afford the way to get the light going forward.
So just to note that the three year return on investment, the grant could not be applied towards that cost.
No.
It would be applied towards additional improvements to the unit, correct?
Right, yeah.
So there's a three year payback.
And for instance, we, we don't, Semple has not owned 100% of the light in the building. Thirty of those lights are owned by either ourselves or else by private gardens. And we have the, you know, the ones that bring parts of.
But we agreed to start to take over, heading for the electric as part of the budget.
Right, and we started agreeing to take on. So, so for those, Semple has a reflection, but we could get it from Mike Schultz, who's been this lecturer, and say, if you go to these 30 poles, see if any of them are already how we do, and you say some of them are and find out if we're not gonna use the proposal and then we can use the grant and basically have those.
So, as I've done this in my lab, so some of the lamps have been fitted. Some have to be upgraded for LEDs. Is it true that all of our lights, they have to be upgraded?
They would be replacements. You can't replace them.
Nothing can, no.
Yeah, it's not something we can do ourselves.
Yeah.
But considering the fact that, you know, even though it's actually dirty lights, it reduces our overall cost.
Certainly.
Yes.
Going forward and if we're taking all the electric built for some, for some place, it's going to be a time to make that change.
So what does the board think about that proposal? We obviously have to work out the details with the business side. Pretty sure we've got our.
Ducks in a row.
Ducks in a row, right. And conceptually, what about this? Do you upgrade the LED and sell these streetlights?
To me, it's an upgrade, but I mean, do we have the money on the project?
I think we would find some, I think we would find the money. Again, this would be for the first year, let's call it first year, give me a $6,000 add, right, because it's $9,000 cost minus $3,000 savings, you know, a $6,000 increase, but, you know, unfunded budget.
What's our current yearly bill? It's like $30,000 a year.
It's about 30,000, right?
It's pretty high.
Huh?
It's pretty high.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good, yeah. But that covers all the, that covers the decorative lamps along Frank and everything, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And it covers all those on the out there, what, on the church street, that kind of stuff.
And just for the board has this information, we have gone LED, including the highway department has gone completely LED here in the last few years. We're going, anything that's out at the water treatment plant is LED. So essentially, we're, you know, the only two places where we still need to do that with the LED. the only two places where we still need to do that, we need to control that and the sewer.
All right, but that's a separate discussion, right now we'll focus on, on the, the streetlights.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
So any, any disagreement with the board, we want to choose one, this is kind of hot off the press this week, so I don't want to make a decision tonight, but conceptually, any problems pursuing, making this a business case? All right, good, no, we'll bring it back next month with an actual proposal to accept, because it is outside the process.
Yeah.
We just gotta make sure we'll find a way to make that through.
And the last two things I have, we did do an orbiting land, taking it like well, Kidney Park, Kidney Parkers, Sexway, came, well, helped take a little shovel, and so we're on the train, we got coverage, right, from the local news, who can take, and take by above a very nice article talking about the tree influence, the tree was planted with some value for, you know, and then this Ted Johnson, his company, donated materials and plant, so we can not charge you.
It's a great deal.
Yeah. And this is the second year we're on, so we still have all the color on it, so we'll get it to them. And I hope to be able to, with steel and some members of the shape of the tree, that he can be able to go down, have us in the next week, we have, and pick out four trees we planted, and the road is a place of the, the ressies, and that please take them, so yes, I'd like to create, create, or use a tree, or a project to be paid for that.
Okay.
So it should be able to happen in this year's, this year.
Good, all right, any else?
That's it.
Trustee Murphy?
I gave you updates.
Okay, good, trustee Cantino?
Uh, mine's really in the pocket, so.
Okay, all right, good, so I want to go to executive session, how do I do this?
Um, well, you'll like, well, I guess we have to play out.
So, so Leila, we're gonna go to executive session, so we need you to leave. Okay, thank you so much. Hope you all, hope you all know, Leila's our, our new rep for Bulletin News.
Hi, nice to see you. Thank you for coming and covering our.
All right.
And then, then, let me turn this stuff off, and then we'll, then you'll enter into.
So make a motion to go to executive session, second? Paulson Thaler?
Aye.